All right. Hello, everybody. Welcome to this month's Montgomery for All meeting. My name is Jane. I'm the Maryland Advocacy Manager with the Coalition for Smarter Growth, which is the group that organizes Montgomery for All. And I'm going to go ahead and get started. So to go over tonight's agenda, I'm going to give a little bit of background information about Montgomery for All. Then I'm going to talk about the Thrive 2050 Public Hearings, which I'm sure you're all super excited for and are definitely signed up for. And then we will have our conversation with Planning Board Vice Chair Natalie Fanny Gonzalez, who we're super lucky to have here tonight. So to start on the background, so just a little bit about Montgomery for All. We're a grassroots group organized by Coalition for Smarter Growth, as I mentioned. And CSG is a broader regional advocacy organization focused on housing, land use, and transit issues. And Montgomery for All is specifically focused on Montgomery County's new general plan. And a general plan is essentially a framework or a blueprint for how and where the county is going to grow over the next 30-plus years. So it looks at all of the planning issues, it looks at environmental systems, housing, land use, transit, all of that good stuff. And so we're advocating for a general plan called Thrive 2050. And we're advocating for a Thrive 2050 that paves the way for a more equitable, prosperous, and sustainable future. So we have a platform that we put together a while ago at this point, because the plan has been happening for a while now. But we want to see the county allow for more housing options, add protections for vulnerable communities, provide equitable, safe access to amenities, build a world-class transit network, and more. We have 10 sort of main goals that we're pushing for. So that's just a little bit about us. And I'm going to talk just a little bit about Thrive 2050. So it's, as I mentioned, this process has been going on for a while since 2019. And so it's gone through, there's been, the first version was the Planning Staff's Draft. And then the Planning Board did a bunch of work sessions on that draft and put together the Planning Board Draft. And now the Planning Board has sent that draft over to the County Council, who has the final say about the general plan. So the Planning Board Draft, oh, and here's some fun pictures about, you know, when we're imagining, you know, what does it actually look like to build communities that are walkable and bikeable, transit-oriented? What does it look like? So here are some fun images of that. I enjoy sort of seeing the visualization of all of this stuff. Hope you do, too. And so what do we think of the plan? It's gone through a lot of iterations. And overall, we think that it's really great. We are encouraging people to sign up to testify in favor at the County Council Public Hearing, which I'll talk about a little bit more in a minute. And, but of course, that doesn't mean, but just because you're supportive of it, that you can't say that it can go farther, that it can change some things. So we have many things that we're excited about. It's really unabashedly embracing urbanism, whether you live in an area closer to whether you live in a suburban community or a rural town. The principles of urbanism of being able to walk places and bike places, and all of that good stuff are true for all different types of communities. And so we're excited about evolving single-family neighborhoods near transit, planning for people instead of cars, making the county more affordable. So lots and lots of stuff that we're excited about. There's still stuff, though, that we would like to see that we think the plan can go further on. We think that it could have even more discussion about eliminating racial and economic segregation. You might not know, but Montgomery County is still pretty racially and economically segregated to this day in the year 2021. And that should be a really explicit goal of this plan, but in the year 2030, we shouldn't have that. So a few other things are listed here. More integration with the Climate Action Plan, which also recently came out, thinking even more boldly on deeply affordable housing. So most of the things that we would like to see is just like, all right, off to a really, really great start. Let's just go even further. So that brings me to testifying. So now that the plan has been transmitted to the County Council, there will be a County Council Public Hearing, or actually, I believe there will be at least two. So why testify? Why take the time to write testimony? It's maybe a new thing to you. It does sound kind of scary. So public hearings, and I have a picture here of what a Planning Board Public Hearing used to look like back in the days when we testified in person. And public hearings are really the only guaranteed opportunity that you get to speak directly to decision-makers. You can always write emails, submit letters. But, and you know, it's very likely a staff person will read that and maybe pass on the TLDR to the decision-maker. But it's kind of rare that you have an opportunity to be face-to-face, even if it's through a computer, with a decision-maker, with an elected official, to tell them, you know, I believe you need to do X, Y, Z. Oh, you can make your voice heard really well in that situation. And also, this is something, we've had a few meetings, that George Levantall, who's a former County Council member, had spoken at. And he's pretty quick to say that, like, public officials, they respond to the people that they hear from. They respond to the people who are in front of them. So you should be the person who is in front of them. And that's what we're here advocating for, to get as many people in front of them as possible, especially people who don't normally get to participate in the planning process, because it can be very difficult and there can be a high barrier to entry. So we want to make it as easy as possible. So to make it as easy as possible, I'm going to take a few minutes to walk through really quickly how to sign up to testify. So to sign up to testify, basically four steps. You're going to go to the County Council's website, and I'll do that right after this. You're going to scroll down to the June meetings to find, well, the June 29th Public Hearing is not up yet, but the June 17th Public Hearing is. And those are titled Thrive Montgomery 2050. You fill out a form with your information and you select OK. So like I said, the June 17th Public Hearing has been scheduled. And it filled up in three and a half hours, really, really quickly. And so there is a waitlist. And I have heard word from the County Council that they plan to add a second public hearing on Tuesday, June 29th, at 7:00 PM. And I believe that if you're on the waitlist for June 17th, you'll automatically be added to the June 29th Public Hearing, but I'm not 100% sure about that. So don't quote me on it. But so those are the two public hearings there. And it's still really good to sign up for the waitlist. The process of how people get picked off the waitlist, or I know that one thing that the County Council likes to do is have it be sort of 50/50 of people who are in support and people who are opposed. So some people, there have been other public hearings on housing topics recently, such as the Missing Middle Housing Bill, where the speaker's list was filled and there was a bunch of people on the waitlist. And then several people got off the waitlist. There was a good handful of people that got off. So who, even me, is not entirely sure how this process works, but it is good to sign up for the waitlist because there is a chance that you will get off of the waitlist. And even if you don't get to speak, you can always submit written testimony, which still carries weight, even if you're not face-to-face virtually with a decision-maker. It's still really great to have your opinions, your voice on the official record. So let me very, very quickly go to that council website. So that link, or maybe I should just, if you search basically on Google, Montgomery County Council, this is the homepage. Then you can click over here, "Sign up to testify by phone." They should really take off the "by phone" part, because you can do it by video now. So now you're on their calendar page, which is kind of confusing because they have things that aren't public hearings on there. I've complained to them about this before. I think the Planning Board process for this is a lot better.
Thank you for saying that.
And so here we are in June, June 17th. As you can see, June 29th is not up there, but Thrive Montgomery is. So there's this button that says "waitlist." You can click on it. And then here is the form. So it asks for some pretty basic information, like your name, your email address, where you live, who you're representing. You're not representing an organization likely. Some of you might be, if you're involved with other organizations. You decide how you want to participate. I would say video, but you can also join the audio. What is your position? I would encourage you to say "for." Your nature of interest, probably resident. There's a lot of interesting choices here, but resident. And people are always kind of confused about this. Describe the nature of your interest in a short sentence. I kind of wish they didn't make this a required one, because you can just say, like, "support the plan. I like walkable communities. We need more affordable housing," whatever you really want to say. Then you'll click OK. So I'm not going to click OK, so I've already seen them. Um, but here we go. But everything that you need to know, actually, I won't present this, is everything you need to know, including how to sign up, but also everything else, including stuff about Thrive 2050. You know, what is in this gigantic plan, what to expect at the public hearing? How does that actually work? A write testimony, talking points, sample testimony? It is all here in our advocacy packet. So it really goes through everything. Some of you might even be the people that I pulled sample testimony from. So thank you for that. Because we've had several public hearings on this. And one thing you might be interested in is the how to write testimony. We also had a whole sort of seminar about this back in the fall. And we have a video about it. So I, you know, give you the introduction, you have the body paragraphs, and the conclusion. You only get two minutes to speak at the County Council Public Hearings. So really, all you have to write is a few paragraphs, and your time is going to be up. And then to fill in those body paragraphs, though, like, what do you say in those two minutes? We have a list of talking points. So general things, and these are the things that I was talking about earlier that I shared on the slides. And then we have it broken down by the chapters of the general plan. So like, the first chapter is all about compact growth and corridor-focused development. And so here you see the things that we're excited about in that chapter and the things that we would like to see. And it goes on and on like that. So my suggestion to you would be to pick the thing that you care about the most. So say you care the most about affordable and attainable housing. Focus your testimony on that. You know, talk about the things you're excited about and then identify something that you would like to see that might not be in there or that you think needs to be made stronger. So that is the quick and dirty of testifying and the public hearings that are happening next month. Very exciting stuff. I am always happy to act as a resource for this. Hopefully, everything you need is in the advocacy packet. But if you have any questions, if you want me to look over your testimony, you know, give you ideas, talk about what's in the plan, literally anything, just reach out to me, jane@smartergrowth.net. I'm happy, always happy to talk. So with that...
Can I ask a question before you go to me?
Yes, yes. Does anybody have any questions?
When you, do you tell people to email the council using that one generic email for everybody? Or are you telling people to email each council member individually? Because I don't know how I feel. When you guys send an email to the Planning Board and you use, like, the MCP email, I don't get those until, like, the day before the session. Whereas the opposition, I probably shouldn't say that, but like, the antis for everything, they email each commissioner, and it's far more effective. I know it's more work, but it's like, it's a difference when I see my mailbox and I see like 50 emails versus one email from the staff with all the testimonies. So just putting that out there.
Absolutely. And that exact reason is why I've started. I started in like the past, like, six months or so, telling people, like, email all of the County Council members. And then in this advocacy packet, also, I always have it on my to-do list to follow up with people, because even if you speak, it's important to submit your written testimonies so that it's there for the public record. So you should submit it definitely to the county.council email address that, like, theoretically goes to all the council members, but then also CC your council members. So at-large, everybody has the four at-large county council members, and then your district person. You can also just email all nine of them. Like, that doesn't hurt us. That doesn't hurt either. But if you want to specifically send it to your district person, you can find out which council district you live in on the County Council's website. So thank you for bringing that up, Natalie. Are there any other questions about this stuff? Let's see, in the chat, Margaret asks, "For those on the June 17th waitlist for the public hearing, when will we know if we are moved to June 29?" That is a great question, and I'm not sure the answer to that yet. But I hope to know really soon. I'm going to follow up with Tom Huckers Office, since he's the council president and in charge of scheduling the stuff. If you ask about that, but if you guys also want to email Huckers Office and be like, "Hey, this is important. Can you please, like, move us along?" That would also be helpful. Any other questions? If you could put them in the chat. All right. In that case, I will transition to the next part of our meeting, which is our discussion with Planning Vice Chair of the Montgomery County Planning Board, Natalie Fanny Gonzalez. And we are very lucky to have you here tonight. Thank you so much for taking the time to be with us. We're really excited to talk with you about economic development and jobs and planning and how all of that relates in Montgomery County. This is a highly informed audience, so I'm sure that you're all going to have some great questions for her on that topic. But yeah, so thank you so much for being here, Vice Chair. It is great to have you.
No, my pleasure. Thank you. I told Jan that I do not want to do another PowerPoint presentation. I've been doing PowerPoint presentations almost every day. And I love when we have a conversation. So feel free to jump in. Jane, if it gets out of control, you can just stop people and tell them to write the questions in the chat. But I love the conversation style. But I'll start by saying a little bit about me, because some of you don't know me. Again, my name is Natalie Fanny Gonzalez, and I'm the Vice Chair of the Montgomery County Planning Board. I was appointed in 2014. And frankly, I never thought about being a Planning Board Commissioner, because it's usually retirees, you know, all white people, no offense, and men who are on the planning board. So me being there was not part of my, you know, goals in life. But I was very engaged with my community since I was very young. When I came to the States, and I was 16 years old, I came with my mom. I moved to Langley Park, Langley Park right next to the Montgomery County. So we actually lived like three blocks from the Montgomery County line. But when you live in that community, in the Langley Park-Lon Branch community, you don't see any borders, right? Like, my high school was Northwestern High School in Heidsville, near the University of Maryland. But my library was the Lon Branch Library, right? And that's just normal when you live in that neighborhood. So after high school, I was very good at math, and I was an ESOL student. So my English was not very good-looking when I was in high school. But since I did very well in math, I was able to be admitted at Goucher College in Baltimore. And I had a risita full ride. So that's how I made it happen. And so as soon as I finished high school, I moved with my mom to Aspen Hill. And the reason why we moved there, well, the number one is that my mom, she was cleaning houses to make a living, and I would clean houses with her over the weekend. So we would ride the bus from Langley Park to Chevy Chase, which is the area where we had most of our business. It would take us almost two hours to get to Chevy Chase from Langley Park, especially on weekends. So each way, okay? So that was my experience with buses once I arrived to the area. And to make it even worse, I was a geek in school, but from my apartment building, which was on University Boulevard, to Lon Branch Library, I had to walk. And there were sections where you couldn't even find a sidewalk. And during the winter, when it got really dark, you couldn't even see because there were no streetlights. So I remember going to Casa de Latino nonprofit as a high school student, saying, "Hey, can we get some help here?" Because it's just really, you know, it was really intimidating, especially for a young girl. You know, working at night, when it was in the dark, when it was only 6:30 PM during the wintertime, it was scary. So I talked to Gustavo, and that's how I met Casa. So we started a campaign to put lights in Lon Branch. So that was my first effort doing community organizing. And so then my mom got this job in Leash World in Montgomery County. So to take care of an older person who lived in Leash World and cleaned the houses. So my mom, and I said, "You know what? It's time for us to buy a property. Let's move to Aspen Hill." So we bought a condo on Belgrade Road. And my mom would ride her bike, because my mom already passed last year. She would ride her bike everywhere. So she would ride her bike from Aspen Hill, from her condo, to Leash World. So people knew her as a lady who rode her bike. So riding bikes is not, excuse me, come from my family. What was that? Is that me?
No, that wasn't you. It was somebody else somewhere. I'll mute them.
Okay. So anyway, so we moved to Aspen Hill. And so since I had a really good experience with Casa, they hired me as an intern. They paid me, by the way, as an intern, which was a big difference. That's why I would say, you know, if you're going to hire young people, you got to pay them, because it helped me. So long story short, I became, after college, I became, Casa hired me full-time, and I worked on the Purple Line. One of the first meetings that we had with Casa and the State of Maryland and Montgomery, Prince George's County, happened at the Langley Park Community Center. And I was one of the people from Casa who stopped that meeting. And that was like ages ago. And look where we are now, still not complete the Purple Line. But we're going to get there. I heard about the lawsuit. They went nowhere, by the way. That's a victory. So it's been quite the ride. So, and I share all this. So, okay, so then I became Casa's lobbyist, and then I started working for SCU. And then, once I became a United States citizen, and it took me quite a few years to gain my citizenship, I said to myself, "You know what? I'm going to vote. And since I'm a citizen now, I'm going to run for office and vote for myself." So at that point, state delegate Anasol Gutierrez was thinking of retiring. She was a big mentor of mine. So I filed, but then as soon as I filed to run for state delegate in District 18, she changed her mind, but I had already filed. So I knew I was going to lose, but I had already filed. So I ran for office knowing very well, and I see quite a few people who've met me during that race, that I was going to lose. But I ran a really clean campaign, so on, I lost. So that was 2014, June. Then all of a sudden, there's an opening on the Planning Board. And my good friend George Levantall, who was a council member back then, said, "Natalie, you did such a great job running your campaign. People love you. You're very involved. You should apply to become a member of the Planning Board." But just think about it. I remember the phone call, as it was yesterday. Think about it. And then I stopped, and I said, "What do I need to think about it? Let me just do it." I mean, it doesn't keep, just apply. If I lose, I lose, you know? Another loss in the same year. What's, big deal. So I applied, thinking, maybe I'm not going to get this gig, you know? My good friend Norman Dreyfus, who was a Planning Board member back then, he was pushing for his friend, another developer, I guess, to get on that seat. But long story short, there had never been a millennial on the Planning Board. There had never been a Hispanic on the Planning Board. I was a woman, so I, like, I checked all the boxes, and I care, you know? And I have my history with Casa, working on, you know, community issues. And, you know, the County Council said, "Okay, we'll give you a shot," and then I got it. So that's how I ended up here, okay? I know that was too long, but I just wanted to give you that as a background. So in my case, I mean, jobs and economic development is very important to me. And I have made that known on the Planning Board, and making sure people are engaged. People who look like me, who don't usually come to the Planning Board, was critical. So one of the things I did, an example, is the Veres Mill Corridor Master Plan, which is the area between Wheaton and Rockville. We approved that about, like, three years ago. I knew that my community wasn't going to come, even though over 75% of the people who live in that neighborhood are people of color, you know, Latinos, African-Americans, Asians. So I talked to the Planning Director, went right, and I said to her, "You know what? We're going to have to go to them." And I don't mean another meeting on, you know, in Aspen Hill Public Library. I mean, walking and talking to people. So she said, "Yes." So I recruited Jessica, who was one of the planners, McVeigh, and a videographer. And I went and talked to people on Veres Mill Road, interviewing them, like, "What do you want to see in your community? What kind of things do you think need to be improved?" So I got on the bus, interviewing people, everything in Spanish. Then we translated the whole thing to be part of the public record. So that's how we handle it. And I think we need to do more of that on every single aspect that we deal with. And it was highly successful to the end. I ended up being invited to speak at the National Planning Association about this, which is, to me, is silly, because this is the type of thing I do as an immigrant, a community organizer. Like, we have done this for years. But for the planning world, it was like, wow, that's amazing. So anyway, we even got an award, which is awesome. So, but jobs, every time I talk to people, jobs and making sure they could get to their job centers was critical. That happened that day, even in Silver Spring. I did another series of interviews in downtown Silver Spring for the Silver Spring Master Plan about a month ago. Same thing, number one issue that people wanted to talk about, job creation, making sure that I can walk around my community safely without being hit by a car. Top, top issues. So, and even when I was working on Thrive Montgomery, you know, we talked about affordable housing, environment. And every time we see the demographics, we see that, you know, Latin Americans, Latinos, and African-Americans are in the lowest, the bottom, when it comes to income levels. In my view, we need to really focus on this community to create jobs that really pay a living wage and support local businesses. Okay, support businesses that are owned by people of color. You can see that in Glenmont, in Wheaton, in Aspen Hill, many parts of the county, making sure that people are actually being rewarded and get those contracts that are key for them to succeed and hire more people that look like them. To me, that's critical. And so that's how I have seen it, and not just because I think that way, but because these are the things that people are thinking of. As we look into the Silver Spring Master Plan, which I hope everybody here is paying attention, the master plan is very, very important, not only because we want to create better connectivity and more access to parks, and I'm thinking Acorn, making sure we extend the park, but jobs, I mean, the vacancy rates in Silver Spring are really high. I mean, all those empty stores. It's something that everybody has to be, I think, it's on top of everybody's list, it should be. Not just Silver Spring. I don't want to pick on them. It happens across the county. And look at the news, even Marriott in Bethesda, they're thinking about having less people work in their building, because this pandemic has totally reshaped the way businesses handle. Like, look at us. We're here in a virtual setting. But let's not forget, low-income workers, I mean, when you go to a shopping center, the person, the cashier, the bus drivers, they still need to go out. And we still need to support those small stores that are in our neighborhoods. But at the same time, the whole dynamic has shifted. And how are we, as we were working on Thrive Montgomery, I was asking those questions, like, you know, we made some assumptions before the pandemic. How is that going to be changed? But even today, we had a session on the Affordable Housing, Attainable Housing Study that we're doing in Montgomery County. Very key, I told staff this morning, like, you know, when we're talking about housing, we also need to think that a house is not just a place where you live. It's also a place where you work, okay? So we need to see it that way, too. So Jane, as you continue advocating on Thrive, there's going to be a public hearing on this attainable housing study this summer. And we need people's input on that, after you see the staff recommendation. But I am really trying to make sure that we're seeing it not just as a place to live, but also a place where people are working, and how we can make sure that we're supporting businesses around neighborhoods, too. I'm going to stop there. And I'm not reading the chat. I don't know if there, yeah, there are questions there. But please, feel free to jump in, too. I don't want to be the one speaking all the time. I don't wanna be the one speaking all the time.
Yeah, thank you so much for that, Natalie, that I think that was a great way to kick off the conversation. Uh, we do have one question in the chat from Jane Park. Hello, Jane. Uh, my 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 favorite other Jane, uh would would you want to unmute yourself and ask your question?
Sure, thank you, Natalie. It's nice to meet you. I've heard so much about you. Um, I'm with Impact Silver Spring. And um I guess my question is, I'm still trying to understand the role of the planning board. And so when it comes to economic development and job creation, like, what specifically can the planning board do in that area? And then how is that different from the Montgomery County Economic Development Corporation? Um, it's just, it's always been a little confusing to me, like, who in the county from the government side sort of owns economic development? Um, so if you could just address that.
Great question. Um, the, okay, this is the best way I can I can describe it. With park and planning, especially when it comes to job creation and economic economic development, the biggest efforts that we do or see is when we worked either on master plans because we basically uh zone places to to have, let's say, there are places where you can only have single-family homes, for example, or you can create multi, or you can create um zoning that is mixed use, that you can have retail, where you can have jobs, and then on top, you can have uh people living there. Those are like the most popular, that were ones that we're pushing for. Um, so that or even retain or create light industry zones. For example, um, when we did the Leighton Spill Master Plan, which is an area near downtown Silver Spring, um, that, you know, there's a Purple Line metro station there. So but this neighborhood, this area is a light industry zone where there are a lot of businesses that are owned by Black and Brown communities, okay? My stand, and you may all disagree, but if you do, the master plan already passed, I'll just put it that way, uh being polite. Uh, to me, I feel that, hey, there was, I'm not gonna name names, to be polite. There were, there was a group of people who wanted to upzone the entire area, especially where the Purple Line was located, okay? When I say upzone, moving it from light industry zone to a mixed use. Sounds great because there is a purple line there, you wanna have more people living there, okay? My view was, I wanna make sure that those Black and Brown business owners stay there and remain there because it's actually a very successful light industry area. There's some other areas across the county where you could argue that they're not successful and that you could uh perhaps upzone them. But in this particular area, um, I didn't feel that it will have created displacement in terms of jobs. And at least I I wouldn't give it justice. So four out of five commissioners voted to to remain, to have it remain light industry zone. And then when when it went to the council, the council agreed. Because, I mean, what good is to have an amazing purple line station that I wanna see if we're displacing committee members? If we're saying we wanna have jobs and people move, leaving in the area nearby, but then what is placing them for a funky Starbucks coffee shop and uh like, I just can't, I couldn't do it. So that that's one example that I can give you that we do. Then when you talk about the Montgomery County Economic Development Corporation, they're more about, you know, finding employers to come to Montgomery County. They're more about finding ways for small businesses to to gain or to get grants or or bids with the government, like, they they have people that will help you as a small business owner to do all that, like, we we have nothing to, we are in charge of zoning. They are in charge of, once the zoning is established, they basically look for all those big employers and they're very focused on, you know, anything that deals with, you know, cybersecurity and tourism, right? Like a whole bunch of sectors. Um, and they have people specialized in uh people of color, like businesses that are owned by people of color or and also the big employers, too. So that that's my quick answer. Oh, and also the S S P, which is the growth policy that we, the planning board worked on in base, basically establishes uh what impact taxes you're gonna pay once you move into a certain area, right? Then after that, it goes to the county council and the county council pushing that. That process happened last year. This was my second time doing that process. The first one was in two thousand and, um, I wanna say sixteen, and then the second one was just now. Uh, this last one was way better than the previous one. Um, I hope I answered that question.
Yes, thank you so much. That's really helpful.
I think that sets up a question that I wanted to ask. Um, and people, please feel free to put more questions in the chat. Um, but I guess the one thing that I've been thinking a lot about lately, this is a really big question. I don't know if anybody really has the answer, but I'd be interested to hear your thoughts. Um, about like, how do we create shared prosperity, especially in a place like Montgomery County that is so um income stratified? We have so many people that are PhDs, that are super highly paid, they're lawyers, they work at NIH, you know? Um, we have a ton of people like that, but then we have this growing population of people with lower incomes. We have a growing um lower income immigrant population. And there's this question of like, and it sort of feels like a a microcosm of the United States at large of like, where's the middle class in Montgomery County? It kind of feels like it's disappearing. And then when we're growing into the future, how do we grow in a way that doesn't just benefit, um, you know, the people with the highest incomes with the most wealth? How, like, not just increasing the price of a home in Chevy Chase, like, that's not, you know, really helping anybody. Um, but how do we create shared prosperity that uh is really felt by everybody and doesn't result in displacement? Like, how do, how do we crack that nut? A big question.
I will say to you, and this is me, the labor, because, you know, I I used to work for S C U, so I'm a big union um advocate. Uh, sometimes you can have people with good feelings, but good feelings is not enough, you gotta put it into a law. Um, so like, I think Montgomery County needs to step it up and make sure that these big, big contracts are coming to play, even contracts that deal with, um, let's say, H L C, which is the Housing and Opportunity Commission, right? Let's say that they're building, they're creating a new housing project, which is great. Um, man, like, at least, like, a a good percentage of that should be given to minority companies, right? Because I I just think it's it's it's, we need to be responsible. Um, we need to make sure that even the the small retail stores that you see around your neighborhood, um, there are, there are enough grants to make sure that they're up to date, you know, that they are well kept, that uh they have the knowledge, the technical knowledge that they need to ensure that, you know, they have access to internet. Because if you have a access to internet, once the pandemic's over, you'll see me going to the, to your work, to the, to your coffee shop, you know, working and drinking my cappuccino. Right now, I only do it in like the most fancy stores because they provide those services, but the small ones, they don't. So how can we, as a county, make sure that we're helping them, educating them to provide those technical uh resources? So it's be more intentional about it in hiring people that you, who you know, and giving contracts to people that you know are gonna hire um folks that look, they're they're minority. The other thing is is education, you know, and I don't wanna um, you know, I, we have a Thomas Edison High School here in Wheaton, that is a vocational high school. They do a great job, I've been there quite a few times. Um, we need more, more programs there that create that pipeline for people to succeed, but also carefully done because I hate it and I have talked to different school board members about this. I hate it when people say, well, you know, not everybody wants to go to college, nobody wants to do this. Well, why don't we change the message and say, you know, it's great for you to to gain a high school diploma and a vocational certificate on, I don't know, you know, carpenter or a mechanical, whatever, something, uh, something related to trades. But that's just a little step, like, you still have the potential to go further and and get your degree as a mechanical engineer. You know, I think we need to start telling our kids that, you know, stop with this whole thing about, you know, it's okay, not not everybody can go to college, because then people, especially young kids, Latino kids who are immigrants who already have, it's a traumatic experience coming to the United States. Let me just tell you that, I'll be the first one to say, I I was like really depressed at first. And you telling me that or telling us that it's okay, you still have a vocational degree and that's it and you you're good? No, we need to inspire and go further because the farther they go, the more money they'll make. You know, the better we'll do as a as a county. So I I feel that tremendously, so that's my quick answer. I know it's as a very complex question, but.
So Mike and Mike English and James Hadrag both asked questions about missing middle housing. So I think I'm gonna ask you both to ask your questions and then we can have the uh planning commissioner respond, if that's okay.
Well, me, Natalie, and yes, I wanna hear your voice.
Yeah, I'll go first. And yeah, um, so speaking of the Silver Spring Master Plan and that's, you know, I I've been active on that and I totally support the missing middle proposals in there, but, you know, I'm not poo-pooing them at all. But even those have gotten quite a bit of resistance from um relatively affluent, relatively white uh areas around uh downtown Silver Spring. What do you make of that, you know, opposition is ready to counter it? And also, do you think there's an opportunity for particularly on the edges on Spring Street and stuff, maybe higher density, like apartment buildings or condos um along there?
I, let me just say that you will always find a small, very vocal um opposition and uh there's sometimes there's nothing you can do about it, like, I I give up. I mean, you, there's sometimes you're not gonna convince them and and that's about it. Like, I I was with Casey, uh the chairman of the planning board, uh in front of, in the, doing the semi-annual report in front of the county council about, I don't know, three, three weeks ago. And council member Hans Hans Reimer asked a similar question. He said that, um, how can we make sure that people who are opposing this, you know, can change their mind? Something along along those lines. And I was just thinking, Hans, there's just no way. You you had to get all those hate emails, I'm sorry, I just can't, you know, and move on because you just can't change them. And that's okay because we live in a diverse community with people, different thoughts, and it is what it is. But the majority, the majority of people, I think they're open-minded and they wanna see, they see the need and see that this county is evolving and that we need to make that drastic changes, especially if you call yourself an environmentalist, okay? So I I wanna emphasize that point. Um, so uh there will be a position in missing middle, it's just one out of so many um tools that we have in terms of housing. Um, you know, you have, and yes, they're expensive, but there's just one type and 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 I do think this county is ready to to have them and to have more duplexes and triplexes right across. I told the staff this this morning, when we were talking about the attainable housing effort, that um that we need to be, to have more emphasis on showing pictures of communities across the nation that already are doing this, so people can see the different houses. I did a presentation on affordable housing this past weekend with a PowerPoint, that's why I don't wanna do this here. And um and people were like, oh, like, I I had a, I received a strong pushback on this whole thing on missing middles and the Z T A from council member Jawondo. And then I told them, well, but you're okay with a Mac mansion that was just built a street away, but you're not okay with having two perfectly beautiful townhouses that could actually fit with the character of the neighborhood? And they couldn't say anything. It's like, it's, if you're talking about the space, a big back mansion in two townhouses would probably have the same type of space. So uh but we we need to like have like a more strategic and intense uh in campaign to educate people and to have them see, not graphics, like those planning graphics that we get in front of the planning board, they're not useful. I mean, real pictures, like in DC, you see them in DC. So, Dean, you have, you have another question, Dean, you, I think.
Did you want to ask your question, James?
Oh, yeah, I, so I just wanted to uh um ask specifically, and I tend to agree with you on changing some people's minds. Um, so I know the the county council last month sent a a letter to the planning commission asking for um zoning reforms, zoning ordinances, updates for the, to to encourage missing middle housing and along the lines of the Jawondo's uh Z T A and some of the other things that they've proposed. Can you give any insight into that process, what what you might plan on recommending, what the you know, you don't have to break it down by street or anything, but just an idea with the planning.
That was the meeting we had this morning on attainable housing. So basically, we're taking um, we'll Jawondo's Z T A, also Hans Reimer, he also have a, he also has a Z T A. I don't think he actually introduced it, he just shared it with people. Um, that plus other ideas that planning staff has, and we're gonna create um a compile a report on on actions that need to happen to tackle this. So once that is done, the polling will be in a few weeks. You're gonna see that and you're gonna have to come and share your reaction before it goes to the county council. But in my position, man, I'm up being very like transparent and like very like upfront. I'm all about more density because we need it. You know, we need more density. If you wanna tackle the 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 huge, you know, the incredible high prices that we have, we need more more density to come to to lower that, but that's just one. I also believe in preservation. And it's on the Thrive Montgomery document. I I do believe that we need to preserve wh- whenever we can, but making sure that um that the buildings are safe for people, okay? Um, so it's it's not just one tool, it's like a whole big box of things that the county needs to embrace. And I think that report from the affordable housing, attainable housing effort will outline them with actions, which is different from Thrive Montgomery. Thrive Montgomery is a vision. You know, this is how we see the county in the next twenty, thirty years. The uh county executive's uh climate action plan, I think it's a vision. I don't think it's an action, I I'm sorry, I just, I think it is, they need to like really say, this is what we're gonna do. Uh, so hopefully they'll update that and they already heard from me. Um, but uh for the affordable housing, you see those actions, like, this is the plan. More housing near transit, obviously duplexes, like upzoning those areas is key. Um, and I know, and and it's a choice, like, I live uh less than a mile from the Wheaton metro station. And I I have with my husband half an acre, okay? If we say we wanna build a, you know, two townhouses instead of a Mac mansion, that's our choice, as long as we follow guidelines, you know, the DPS will have like a set set of things that we need to follow, uh making sure it it actually looks good, it's nice because we we want beautiful buildings, all that stuff. Um, hope that answered the question.
Thank you. Um, so there's, we're, as always, there's uh not a ton of time left and we've got some really great in-depth questions. Um, but while we're on the topic of housing, I wanna jump to um to Jeanette's question and then we can jump back to some of the other questions um from Richard and Paul. Um, but I think while we're on the topic of housing, uh Jeanette brought up some good points, if you wanna unmute yourself, Jeanette.
Hi, um, I obviously need to get better acquainted with Thrive Montgomery twenty fifty, good, I I kinda jumped in on this and I'm not that familiar with it, so I will, I will do my homework. Um, to backtrack, but I was on the Wheaton Urban District Advisory Committee um a while back when Wheaton was being, you know, the the redevelopment was being talked about. And um, so I know a little bit about this, but I I, my focus lately has been more on those who are not able to speak up or show up at these uh at these events. And and like I said, does affordable housing even exist in Montgomery County? I know I own a house in Montgomery County, but if I had to buy a house in Montgomery County, I couldn't live here. Um, so, uh, and then whenever there's more housing built, um, it seems that there's a small portion that's set aside for for um affordable housing, but is it really? I mean, um, you know, and then the substandard housing that that people uh who don't have the money, I mean, is that being renovated, you know, improved? Um, I I just, I just feel like I really wanted to thank you, Natalie, for what you've been saying that that you were go, that you went out and interviewed people on the street and you took the bus and you did what, uh, you know, you really talked to them to find out what um what they needed, you know, what was important to them. And I think that's what we have to do a whole lot more, we have to be listening to people and and finding out, you know, rather than just putting a building up, you know, we have to think, you know, how are people going to be using this? And and I agree that, I mean, we know. People going to be using this? And and I agree that, I mean, we know that people are living multifamily in. Single family, I mean, because they have to, cuz it's too expensive to do otherwise in many cases, and we have to cut them some slack. Um, so anyway, more, I think more, I need to know how to be a good advocate for. People who can't advocate for themselves.
I love that you're saying that, Janet, cuz we need more advocates like you, you know, people who care. And people who are not selfish, because at the end of the day, we live in the same community. I was thinking of the ADU uh battle that we had, the big fight for the accessory dwelling units. What, two years ago now, I think, or maybe three? It was really hard. I mean, we were just legalizing something that was already happening in the county. All that drama. And then I have kids in the Montgomery County Public School System, a second and a third grader. And I went to the, you know, they they did this boundary uh public sessions across the county two years ago. And I went to a couple of them and it was really, really sad that people were saying that that, to hear people saying that they don't want. Certain type of kids, like people who look like my children, who are Afro-Latinos, to come to their school. Without thinking, this is the public school system. You don't own the schools, okay? There, we all pay for them. So that attitude of being so, so entitled and so self-centered without thinking that. It's great to educate kids because you want them to, you know, to get an education, they make a lot of money. Because that helps us, all of us. Um, so anyway, I wanted to say that. Jane, back to you.
All right, yeah. Um, so moving along to or going back to kind of in the chat, uh, Richard, did you wanna unmute yourself to ask your question?
Yes, hi. Randy, thank you for coming to this uh, to this meeting. And uh, I uh, I'm concerned about the uh, the, the way we grow uh and capturing the wealth. Uh, public and private wealth uh that we develop. As people aspire to better jobs and higher pay, uh, which is an important, uh, important thing to. Um, to support. Um, oftentimes, we uh, we are restricted in going into. Uh, lifestyles that um rob us of the uh, of the growth in income that we've attained. Uh, for instance, in the form of car ownership, uh, that takes twenty percent of a household income. Um, so a, an aspirational life of uh, of low or no car ownership. Um, as a positive thing to aspire to, uh, as and to have communities that support that. Uh, can build uh wealth locally. Uh, and uh, and be a synergist in the um, uh, work we do to attract business locally. Uh, so I would like to see metrics and I wonder what your thoughts are on metrics that track. Uh, the um, uh, the flow of public and private uh, uh, monies uh through the county. Um, we should really try and develop communities that recirculate that wealth locally. Um, and capture more of it rather than going to big oil and car manufacturers or. Uh, many other attributes of a materialistic's uh culture.
I love you. I love your question. No, no, we don't do that in too many, with too much detail in parking planning, but the council does. But I will say two things, um, on the issue with, uh, I think you mentioned, uh, parking, right? And um, yeah, I would say. You know, this idea that that you must have a, that that if you have a retail store, and I see this in Silver Spring, okay? We're getting a lot of emails and and comments from people who own businesses in downtown Silver Spring. Um, telling me, you know, don't take my parking away. Um, without thinking, well, maybe, you know, parking is not the answer. You want more people to walk to your stores. You want more people to feel connected to your business, but parking, like there's so many places around the world where you can, where you can see and improve that. When that um, the parking is not a solution. I think we need to re- reexamine how we see parking in connection with local businesses. And um, and check our parking policies. Like sometimes I find crazy that it is cheaper to find. Parking on the street versus the garages. It should be the opposite because you wanna eliminate parking on the street so you can have more walkable communities, like the bike lanes. The buffers for people to walk so we can get that space and then have people park in the garages. But it's it's crazy to me that we make it so easy for people to park on the street. So I think, I think that's number one. And I brought this up. I think it was like three months ago, we had an application in downtown Silver Spring. And uh, the staff really was struggling and making sure that we wouldn't losing too much parking on the street. And I said, man, you're seeing this, like I see the opposite, like why, why are you see, like we're, we're talking about walkable communities and you guys are doing the. The the exact opposite, protecting the parking. We wanna help businesses, maybe the county need to, needs to invest more, invest more. Help, like as I was saying before, uh, making sure our retail, especially minority-owned businesses. Are more up to date and more people can see them and they can have more contracts and all that good stuff. But uh, the attaching the parking situation, so that came to my window, I was asking you a question. I know you had a really complex question right there. Um, and I only, I only answer like, like one fifth of it.
All right, we have time for one more question and we've got some people boosting Zach's question in the chat, so I'm gonna have that be our last check question. And I'm sorry that we weren't able to get to everything as as usual, um, but uh, that that is the way it goes. Um, let's see, so Zach, if you wanted to unmute yourself to ask your question?
Sure, um, thank you for coming. Um, I wanted to dive deeper into a comment that you made before where you opposed upzoning a future Purple Line Station neighborhood. Uh, because you were afraid that it would displace the minority-owned businesses there. Um, but you also acknowledged that we need more housing, especially near transit for, you know, housing purposes and sustainability purposes. And, you know, car-free lifestyle purposes. So, you know, how do you balance those two concerns? Do you think that we can um upzone uh places near uh, near transit without displacing? The businesses? Or do you think we can only upzone places without minority-owned businesses?
No, I think in this particular area, because it was lighting industry, which is very, very particular. Uh, I took that as special treatment, but every, I think that's the only place I have ever in my eight years done it, to be honest with you. And it's because it was a very successful lighting industry zone uh in an urban setting, which is right, not really common. And uh, so that was the special reason. But I do think, like, to give you an example in terms of housing. We had done, Montgomery County has done a very good job in certain places like uh Elizabeth's uh Square Housing in downtown Silver Spring. The, I think it's Lee Development owns that, you know, they created a building and then they basically moved people from the old building. To the new one, so they wouldn't displace people. You know, efforts like that are important. We tried to also doing the same thing in the um. Bursman Corridor Master Plan, there's some properties there where we, where we told the developer, um, they own um. Small garden-style apartments near the Twinbrook Metro Station, uh, right at the border with Rockville, the city of Rockville. Do the same thing and we worked it out. Um, so it's it's being a strategic to make sure that people stay. You know, because otherwise I don't feel I'll be doing my job if if all I do is, yeah, I'm zoning because we need more housing. But if I'm displacing the people who already live there, I couldn't live with myself. I'm I'm telling you right, right now. So. So it does, and um, I do think the county needs more money on the affordable housing fund. Uh, we need to invest more there. Uh, we need to invest, change the formulas at the state level, and I know this is not housing, but it does deal with economic development. Um, I think it's crazy that Governor Hogan was able to push for this huge. Beltway widening, right? About the winning of the Beltway, put all these billions of dollars there. For highways. Why can't he do the same thing for sidewalks and connectivity that will help businesses? That are like, you know, minority-owned businesses. And I'm sorry to single them out, but it's just like, they're the ones who are really struggling. Okay, why can't we put more money in places like Burtonsville, Glamont, you know, you name it. To to make sure that there are sidewalks that connect to those businesses, to make sure there are bike lanes with bike racks. You know, my bike was stolen a while back. It's not gonna happen again, but because I couldn't lock it in a secure place. So. Making sure that there are amenities that makes sense, not just these big million, billions of dollars on highways. Connectivity to enhance and support local businesses. That's how we need to see it. That's what ha- bus stops and and and. And bus shelters, you know, I hate it when you see bus stops with a lot of people, you know, with without a bus shelter. Uh, people don't think about it unless you take the bus. They are critical because those folks are going to to their jobs and you wanna make sure that they're. You know, healthy. So, I know I I gave you a a long answer, but. But uh, I, that was the only time I saw it to you, where I just put my foot down because it was a very special situation. And I, I just couldn't see that happen. The other was the Costco gas station in Wheaton. You know, Costco wanted to have this mega gas station about, that was like, I mean, I was brand new to the planning board. You know, it was very intimidating. And then Costco came in, the big back gas station, and then I said, you know what? I thought Wheaton was an urban setting. Don't we want people to walk? You're gonna bring this, this big thing, bringing more cars to the area. How is that safe? First of all, second of all, it's gonna a- um, affect the small businesses that own gas stations around their neighborhood. They, how is that helping? So I was the only board member who voted against that, by the way. Um, so very proud of it and um. So it's, it's, you know, there're gonna be situations where you, you need to take a different approach. The Leightonsville was a different approach for me. Um, you, and uh, that Costco gas station was another one, and I know we're running out of time, Jane, I'm sorry. I talk too much, you can't stop me.
All right. All right, awesome. Well, thank you so much for taking the time to be with us and to answer all of those questions. And thank you to the participants for asking such great questions. Um, so just to wrap up now, since we're a few minutes after eight, uh, what's next? Um, we already talked about the public hearings. Like I said, feel free to reach out to me anytime about that. Um, and then next, Flora Montgomery for All, our next meeting will be June twenty fourth with Councilmember Andrew Fritson. So that should be an interesting conversation. He's one of the three members on the council committee that will be reviewing Thrive. We already talked with Hans, who's the chair of the committee, and back in December, we talked with Will Jawando. So this will be the third, third and final uh Fed Committee member that we've had. Um, and it will be in between the public hearings, so it'll be interesting to ask him, uh, what he thinks about how it's going. Uh, in then July, uh, I think we're gonna have a part out Verma, one of the other planning commissioners. And I think we might do it outdoors in person, maybe in Acorn Park or something like that. I don't know yet. Uh, if you have ideas or suggestions, um, I know a lot of people live in Silver Springs, but obviously not everybody does. Um, but yeah, I'd love, I would really love to do something in person with you all, um, maybe Silver Branch. I've really been craving Silver Branch beer, so uh, lots of options there. Um, but yeah, I think we we might be getting back to to in-person meetings or something like that. Uh, but I'll let you all know. Um, and until then, uh, I hope you all take care, stay well. Um, and yeah, feel free to reach out anytime with any stuff. All right, have a good night, everyone.
Thank you, Jane. Thank you, Natalie.